He was a dirty old man.
Not amused by the man.
I think he was with John and Jose over at City Hall after the eye cat meeting.
Oh, okay. Good.
Betty, we're just waiting for Travis. He was over at City Hall, so I think he's running just a little late.
Good morning.
Morning, Betty.
Good morning.
Wow, with only three up, man, we get a nice big screen, so. Still raining there.
Yeah, supposed to rain for another hour. But too, too late, too late for my, uh, my ocean kayak trip.
Yeah. What island are you on?
It's called Oars Island, and it's just off Harpswell, about, about mid-coast.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's, it's really, really beautiful. It's just stunning.
Are you north or south of, of Bahaba then?
You know, I, I'm not sure. We're, uh, we're a bit north of Portland.
Yeah, okay. Nice area.
Yeah, it is, it is absolutely beautiful. And it's been, you know, in the sixties and sunny every day until today.
You got an excuse for that, Mike? You got a tardy. You got a tardy. All monitored?
You didn't start the meeting yet, did you? You didn't start the meeting yet, did you? All call the meeting order.
We were just waiting.
We're done. Let's start with the Fudge of Legions.
Fudge of Legions, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic through which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mokler. Packard.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Manning.
Here.
Hammond.
Here.
Any conflict of interest declarations? Hearing none. My computer's slow. My computer is slow. Trying to get pulled up. Okay, approve agenda. There we go. Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mokler.
Yes. Uh, any visitors to be heard? Hearing none. The American Rescue Plan funding for the courthouse HVAC.
Yeah, I, uh, I asked about this, uh, Travis, to have it added to the agenda because, under the, under the American Rescue Plan funding, some of the things that are eligible for funding are things like, improving the quality of, uh, of the atmosphere in, in public buildings like this one. One of the things that I know about the building is that we do have air exchange problems. I know under National HVAC standards that you exchange the air in and out so many times an hour to be considered a, building that contains healthy air. Under the COVID Act, as you saw in some of the things that, Carrie sent to us, that ventilation improvements in congregate settings and capital investments in public facilities to meet pandemic operational needs such as physical plant improvements to public hospitals, health clinics, and other public buildings to implement COVID-19 med- motive, mitigation tactics. That's on page eighteen of the handout. I think just that gives us, uh, at least hope that we would be able to get, uh, use some of those funds. As I understand it, that the state has, uh, I don't remember the exact number, but there are several billions of dollars that are, that is earmarked for South Dakota. Uh, and I think that our share was something like 2.3 million. Is that correct?
We actually will get a little over 2.7 million, and we have already received half of it. So that money is already sitting in our bank account essentially.
So to be used, or do we have that earmarked yet?
Um, nothing earmarked yet. It's just waiting to be used.
Okay.
Okay. If it's, uh, if that's the case, you know, and if we have that money that we could, uh, could earmark for improvements to the HVAC in this building, I think it would be a good use of, of those funds. It would be a wise use of Clay County's resources. And, uh, mainly what I was looking for is to see if, sense of the commission, see if there would be interest in following up on doing a project like that, if it would be in the interest of, of Clay County. And I think that, uh, in view of the type of air quality problems that we've already know we have in the building, the antiquated fan coil style, uh, heating and air conditioning units that we have with essentially zero air exchange in and out of, out of the, the living space of the building. It might be a good idea for us at least to look into it, see if we can get someone that's expert in such matters to come and take a look at the building. Should we go on from there?
Should we have Beckenhauer?
I think that would be a good move. They've already, they've already done some look at it as part of the, uh, previous work done on the courthouse replacement and jail, jail expansion, uh, system. So I would think that would be a good move.
Think that'd be, they'd probably, well, they would have access to more people. That would do that type of work, too.
Right, right. And they've, as they say, I think that they've already done a, an assessment of the building. So it could be, uh, just a matter of asking for their, uh, a written opinion, uh, since they've already done some work like this on this building. And I, I was mainly looking for a sense of the commission, should we look at something like this?
That's not gonna hurt anything.
No.
Is, in looking at this further, is there a possibility of using it for the plumbing also? Problem. And there's another area where, um, you can use it for what? Nonprofit aid, um, that was negatively affected for tourism programs, you know, places like WH over the VAC. I don't know what else. Were closed during the entire time. And if that could help us to provide some funds, it would help our budget for the next year cover some of those areas that we're talking about cutting.
Okay. Carrie, you've got the rules, correct?
I do, yeah. It's that hundred and fifty-one page document that I sent out to you guys. Um, the only thing is, I understand, if you pass it on to another organization, then you have, um, those subrecipient monitoring requirements under that federal rule. So there would be some, you know, auditing type of requirements that we would have to fulfill.
Yeah. And I don't know when the application part, what the deadline would be on the application process itself. But I know that you have until the end of 2024 to expend any funds that would be used, uh, for those sorts of improvements.
So I wonder, should I get ahold of Dick then?
Um, yeah, that would be a good place to start.
Let him know what we're, sorry, contemplating, and he can get ahold of Beckenhauer then.
Yep. I think it might involve, um, another contract similar to what we had with the roof project where they'll oversee it on an hourly basis. Since we're not actually
Right.
in the midst of going forward with the building right now, so.
For that kind of money, I think it's worth our while to look into it. To get that kind of a grant.
So I'll get ahold of Dick.
Okay.
Let him know what we're thinking.
Would the plumbing fall underneath that? I.
I didn't see anywhere where plumbing does.
No, I didn't, I didn't see that either.
It says water. That's the only part.
Yeah, and I think they're referring to like, you know, actual water infrastructure, which would fall under the municipalities, with the counties.
Water supply does. For instance, there's, there's a spot in there where you, the city could apply for funding to replace all lead connections. Uh, household connections. I know we've replaced a number of those. It's, it's, uh, fitting, I guess, that you guys are here. And I don't know if you had already been aware of and, uh, looked through that idea of getting funding from, through the COVID nineteen relief. That, uh, that is a specific program that, uh, the city could take care of. So I know that you have, uh, as you find them, you replace lead connections now, and I don't think that they're well mapped. We don't know exactly where they all are.
I think so much to be that is a, um, a property responsibility to get in the meter. It's very, it's very.
Thanks, Travis.
Is it on then? No offense, uh, Commissioner Smith, I was just trying to avoid getting pulled in. I, as I understand, or what I hear you saying, Commissioner Hammond, is that is typically this property responsibility from the, the, uh, meter box back. So we do replace ours, um, our lines, if we were to find any sections of it. We did, I know in the downtown area, identify at least one lead connection. We notified that property owner, that property owner did replace theirs when it was uncovered.
I, I know in my old neighborhood over on Yale Street that, uh, in fact, I, we had, uh, a water line leak on our half. And ours was a full lead connection all the way to the house from the deal, from the city, city's connect. Uh, I believe that this particular, uh, program will help pay for the private side, uh, to replace it because they're specifically concerned about, uh, the effects of lead, lead on children, lifetime, lifetime effects. And so I think it would address giving the city a grant to help replace those private lines even. I don't know that for sure, but that's my impression of my reading of the act. Off subject, but.
So anything else for the HVAC part? I'll get ahold of Strasburg and.
Uh, Betty had a comment, I think.
Yeah, no, I, I, I just wanted to, um, say that I, 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 I think that the, um, uh, HVAC project fits squarely, um, you know, under, under the COVID grant. But, um, but I, you know, my reading of it is that the plumbing won't, and I like that idea of using an alternate, um, way of getting funding for that.
Okay. Well, I'll take the motion to go into executive session.
Move to go into executive session for contract matters.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Uh, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mokler.
Yes, we're in executive session.
I move that we come out of executive session.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mokler.
Yes, we're in regular session.
So basically, I think we can talk about it. I understand this, right?
We're gonna talk about everything.
Okay.
We're just throwing it all out there. We can't, this isn't, this isn't how business would be done, but this is how the government works apparently. So we know Larry Brady wants two and a half million for his fourteen acres. Stan Munger has not returned. No. I don't, I mean, maybe he's not interested, maybe he's busy, too. Who knows? The one north of Prentice is thirty-eight acres, I believe. Larry Brady's is twelve or fourteen.
It's twelve?
Twelve or fourteen. I think it's fourteen. Okay, so fourteen. The, the property south of Runnings was a no.
The Prince.
Right.
Yes. Um, I, I think he said it's thirty-eight acres. And it's sixteen thousand two hundred an acre, so six hundred and fifteen thousand.
Stan Munger's was thirty-two acres, if I remember right.
Thirty-two. And that is presently outside of the city limits, right?
Stan's, Stan Munger's is, and the one on Prentice.
And.
Princeton, sorry. I keep saying Prentice.
And you don't have a number for that one, or I'm confused?
Which one?
The Princeton?
Princeton is sixteen thousand two hundred an acre.
Okay.
So it's six hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred dollars based on thirty-eight acres.
And that's outside of the city limits. And that's one of the, you know, I guess that's why you guys are here, really. What your thoughts are on those properties and how it would impact the, the city's, uh, expansion plans?
I, I, I would guess a little bit, and say, um, any of those properties coming into the city, don't view that as a negative.
Right.
So I, I, I don't see negative to those properties becoming part of the city limits.
So you would welcome either of those properties to bring them in for the purposes of putting our jail there?
I can't speak for this council, but I, I'm trying to come up with the reason why we wouldn't want those properties into the city, particularly where our partners in, in the, in this complex, the law enforcement, dispatch, like that. And I don't know what all the project entails. It's just jail, or if it's jail plus sheriff, police, and dispatch. I don't know, but I mean, I don't see negative of those properties becoming part of the city.
I wanna, I wanna make the caveat that it's their personal opinion that we won't hold you to it.
I understand.
It's just your thought, just so people don't come back and go, well, this is what they said.
Yeah, I understand. Even the mayor can't speak for the council as a whole, so.
Right, I just, I'm putting it out there for the public.
Yes, thank you.
More to make sure we were communicating on this.
I think, you know, the, probably the, the concern from the council and warning that, that be the traversing of Highway fifty is obviously the biggest challenge with that with the bypass there.
But I think we could get stoplights, put it simple enough. I actually just went through, I took Brooklyn's bypass on the other day. There's two stoplights on their bypass.
There are.
Yep. It's amazing what you look at when you're dealing with it.
Uh huh.
Yeah.
And I, I would hope so, but, you know, just based on our conversation earlier today and some of the things that you think that DOT should be able to take care of fairly easily and quickly.
Yep.
And many years later, you're still waiting for it. I don't necessarily wanna depend on it until we would have it confirmed, just because that is a pretty big deal. And outside of all of our decision-making powers.
Yeah, understood and concur.
And I, I like the north property just to help push the million. They're bought out of development property inside the currency limits. That would help get sewer and water across the, across the bypass. And the cost.
And the cost. I was just gonna say, that's probably the big one right there.
Two million goes a long way.
That's, that's huge.
My only other question, and maybe the city knows, can we own development property?
Uh, my initial answer to that is I believe so. And the reason why I offer that as the answer is, um, it is now all in the VCDC's hands. But the city did own the lots, uh, like where the BTC is at, or Biotest, or Runnings and that, is that? At one point in time, the city owned that, and we, uh, would sell those, um, to businesses as they came up. As you, you know, you know, it's sometimes not always easiest for this, uh, governmental entity to deal in real estate. So that's why we, the city transferred that property to the VCBC, because they're better at working with some of those entities. But I do not believe there is a reason why you cannot.
Hmm. What next?
Yeah. Where do you wanna move forward, Jim? What do you, what's your initial thoughts?
Well, I, I guess my thoughts are, I mean, Larry Brady's got the best spot. There's no question. A mall, you know, just because where it's located. However, two point five billion dollars is way out of what we can even think about spending.
Agreed.
I'd like to find out what, if Stan's even, Munger's even interested in selling it, because I'd be interested to see what he has to say. Because that's actually, that's not a bad spot either. He wouldn't be crossing the high, the, the bypass. Uh, otherwise, I'm pretty much sold on the thirty-eight acres. I mean, it's just dollars and cents mean a lot to me, so I think that's where you're at. So is there a way to, we can't force Larry to get back to us, and the only other way we can do is to get Munger to give us a bid.
Right. We can't force him to get back to us.
No, that's what I mean. So we're actually down to one bit, or one place that we're interested, unless there's another spot in town. I don't know where it'd be.
But the suggestion has been to, uh, have a Realtor represent us, uh, for this. So that may be one of the next steps, is, is to choose a Realtor to help us through this process.
Question is, I, I ask why, um, there will add, what, a five to eight percent on top of what we're already paying, or will pay?
Well, what, what we could do?
Excuse me, I think I'm not finished yet. The other question I must admit is, of all of our real estate offices, there's, tends to be some family ties within. Um, I don't know how that will get us any further ahead.
Yeah, so I, I, I think, uh, I think a real estate agent is incredibly useful at this point in the process. And I think what we could do is, um, send out an RFP, um, to, uh, to, uh, real estate agencies in the area. And, um, uh, you know, ask them, you know, basically to come up with a proposal for representing us. Um, and because it's a large amount of money, um, you know, we might very well, uh, be able to negotiate a lower rate.
Well, what are they gonna do for us? That we don't already know?
Yeah, so I think what they could do is, um, negotiate, what they always do, which is negotiate a price. And a fair price and facilitate the sale, um, you know, by gathering documents and, um, you know, uh, setting a sale date and, uh, superintending the transaction. I mean, that, you know, everybody who tries to sell a house on their own, I shouldn't say everybody, but a lot of people who try to sell a house on their own wind up, uh, you know, hiring a real estate agent, because that's, that's what makes these transactions happen smoothly.
I would just say, you know, again, not being able to fully speak for the council without, you know, we haven't really had an opportunity to discuss this. But I, I do think that there might be more comfort level on the council side if there was a third-party negotiating. Just, you know, from, from our perspective, if there was ever like a, a real estate deal that was, you know, going on, a council person wouldn't be the one to individually talk to the person and negotiate that. And I think that there would be some discomfort on that, um, as far as, again, sort of transparency. And when you've got a professional who can have those confidential conversations and maybe push a little bit in a way that you guys aren't able to without it impinging on your transparency, sometimes it can be helpful. Because they can, they can do the hard push, and they can make the calls and do those things, and they're not required to share it with public in the same way you are. And so as we kind of saw, when you try and do that, then you're forced into either deciding to keep things to yourself, which people are uncomfortable with, or put everything on the table, which makes it a lot harder to, um, kind of keep the business going. So I think, just to share what I think our perspective would be as far as being involved going forward.
Well, I do know on the Princeton property, there's no, there's no negotiation. That's what it is. I mean, they're not gonna come down.
If, if I can just, I, maybe this is something to talk to Dick Strasburg about, too. I, I think Tegra Group does some real estate brokerage services. Not totally sure, but that would be something to look at, too. You know, unless you want a local person that's familiar with our, um, our local sellers here, maybe they would have a better relationship with them that way, but it's just a suggestion.
I actually like that suggestion.
I do, too.
Because I don't know who you're gonna choose as a local Realtor. To be honest with you, I think it gets pretty difficult. Plus, we've actually already hired Dick. So, and I'm pretty sure he does. I'm sure that's one of the things he said early, that he could do real estate. He had somebody in there with purchases. So I think that's a good way to go. And get him involved, have him contact these other two. And see if he can get somewhere with it. I mean. And/or he may, he may, uh, engage the services of one or more real estate agents on our behalf.
Right.
Which gives us another layer between us and, uh, uh, in that selection process. So there's.
I've just gone out to, uh, Tegra's website real quick, and they do list commercial real estate brokerage as one of their services.
It makes the most sense, because they're already hired as our representative.
Do we need a motion?
To do that? I suppose, we better.
I'll make a motion to have.
I'll make a motion to have Dick, uh, Strasberg, Taggier, look into, uh, looking at, into relating for us, negotiating.
I'll second that.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Betty?
Yeah, so I, I, I would still favor, um, getting a better real estate rate, um, by, uh, sending out RFPs and, you know, Tegra could, um, could bid like everybody else. And, uh, we might very well get a lower rate than, um, you know, whatever it is that they charge everyone. So I, 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 I would, I would prefer to have a competitive process based on a lower, a lower rate for this transaction. I think we'd save some money.
Well, and the other thing is, the, the person who owns the Princeton property is a Realtor. They have a real estate license, so there's no cost there.
But I think the county wants to have somebody representing us.
That's what Tegra would be doing. I, I think we're looking into asking them what they would, how they would provide and what they would be charging. If it is unacceptable, then we can come back and we could go to bid, but time-wise, I would like to get this going.
Any further discussion?
Do a read back of Mike's motion?
He's gonna, we're gonna have Dick with, uh, Tegra Group.
Yeah.
We're gonna employ them to be the Realtor on our behalf.
Okay. I, I, I was just thinking that, uh, maybe we oughta back up just a little bit and ask him, ask him to, uh, give us a proposal, and whether he would end up, uh, being a manager, uh, to, uh, to what Betty's suggesting. Not necessarily say, hey, we're, we wanna hire you, Dick, to be our Realtor. Give us a proposal to be our Realtor.
Sense of the commission on that. Well, I, I would amend my, my motion with the point is saying that somewhere along that same line, but basically, let's get, let's find out what Dick charges. And if it's out of way, out of line, then of course, we don't go that route. Because we all know that Realtors in Vermont, I, I mean, are anywhere between five and six percent, I could even low. I know that's pretty much standard. I guess we'd have to look, but, so we know that. So if he comes in under that, I guess that would be all right with me.
So I guess what I'm proposing is maybe amend that to be, ask him for a proposal rather than ask to hire him.
Yep.
And I'll accept that as a second.
Okay.
I have a motion in a second to, to have a proposal from Dick.
Right.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
No.
Packard.
Yes.
Mochler.
Yes. Motion passes. Anything else?
Believe so.
Then, motion to adjourn then? He was fishing, he was fishing for that.
I'll stack it.
I have a motion in a second. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mochler.
Yes, motion, motion approved. Thank you.
Thanks for coming, guys. Yeah. Could very well be that, uh, Dick suggests.